Alawak County School Boards in session?
Oh, it wasn't very loud.
Check, check. Better?
It's not very loud.
Madam Clerk, we take the roll.
Uh huh. Mr. Colick?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Miss- Mrs. Perkins?
Here.
Mr. Wooster?
Here.
And Mr. Marsh?
Here.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda for open session as presented.
Second.
The motion and the second in discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Colick?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wooster?
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh?
Yes. Motion passes.
Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Just do it all at once? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, it is with profound sadness that I share heartbreaking news. Yesterday, beloved Smithfield- beloved Smithfield School PE teacher, Mrs. Kristen Phelps, was involved in a car accident and tragically did not survive her injuries. We know this news is incredibly difficult to process. Her absence will be deeply felt throughout the school community. We ask that you keep her friends and family in your thoughts and prayers during this extremely difficult time. Please join us and the Board in a moment of silence by standing and observing in honor of Mrs. Phelps, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So that's a tough way to start the meeting. It is March 6, 2025. We're in Westside Elementary School and we're here tonight to hold our FY25 public hearing for the budget. And we'll just start right off with our comments and Madam Clerk, if you could.
In accordance to policy BDDH-E, presentation of information on any subject will be concluded at the discretion of the Board. No person will be recognized to speak more than once. Citizens scheduled on the agenda to speak will be permitted four minutes maximum time for their presentation. Delegations will be requested to limit their speakers to two. Persons speaking are asked to be specific. State the issues for the Board's consideration and attach a copy of your prepared remarks. If you have prepared remarks, they should be given to the Board Clerk. Please do not approach the Board members. Any matter relating to specific students will be heard by the School Board only in a closed meeting. First, we have Tiffany Parker. KJ Wimbush.
Hello?
Dear School Board Members and Dr. Kramer, I stand before you today with deep passion and strong commitment of the work I do in Alawak County Public Schools. My name is Kowasi Wimbush and I'm here to advocate for the continuation of my position as a Registered Behavior Technician. This is more than just a job for me, it's a calling. It is about making a lasting impact on students who need support to succeed academically and socially. Behavior program is not a luxury. It is an essential foundation for student success and without it, students, especially those with behavioral challenges, struggle to regulate their emotions, engage with peers and teachers, and focus on learning. Through intentional targeted interventions, I help create a supportive environment that removes barriers in education and equips students with the skills they need to thrive, both inside and outside the classroom. In just my first thirty-nine days, I worked with ninety-three students, fifty-six in the Special Education Department and thirty-seven in General Education across twenty-four classrooms. This includes implementing behavior plans, conducting functional behavior assessments, and providing direct support for de-escalation and crisis response. I also mentor students and collaborate with staff to ensure every student receives the guidance they need to succeed. The loss of my position would severely limit our capacity to support those students and stretch an already limited team even thinner. Beyond my role in behavior support, I am deeply invested in the community and the students I serve. From coaching the Great Computer Challenge to funding, founding, the Young Men of Excellence Mentorship Program, I am actively working to create opportunities for growth, leadership, and community involvement. These initiatives have changed lives and made a tangible impact on the community, but they are at risk if my position is cut. I grew up in this county and I'm committed to giving back to the place that shaped me. Losing this position will not just affect my job, it would take away critical support from students who need it most. I urge you to invest in the future of Alawak County Schools by approving the continuation of my position. Thank you.
Sir, hold on, please. For the clarification for the Board, you said you were involved in de-escalation?
Yes.
Do you- do you work alongside the SSOs?
I do not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board, do you mind if I call Ms. Parker, if she's here? Tiffany Parker?
Good evening, Chairman Marsh, Members of the Board, Dr. Kramer, and everyone in attendance. My name is Tiffany Parker. I'm an Executive Board Member of Hardy Elementary PTA and I am a parent of two Hardy Elementary students. And I come before you tonight as a concerned parent, a community member, and advocate for the safety and well-being of our students. I want to take a moment to share a personal experience that illustrates why I wholeheartedly support Dr. Kramer's proposed budget, particularly the funding allocated for transportation improvements. A few months ago, my five-year-old daughter, a kindergartner, was placed on the wrong bus. As a parent, you can imagine the fear and panic that set in when I realized my child was not where she was supposed to be. A mix-up like this is more than just an inconvenience, it's a serious safety concern. The Transportation Department is doing their best with the resources they have, but they are stretched too thin. Additionally, funding would allow for improvements in staffing and enhance tracking systems to ensure that no student, especially our youngest students, are ever misplaced again. But this isn't just about my daughter's experience. Yes, just yesterday, we had another incident. A school bus broke down, leaving students stranded. What's even more concerning is that parents were not immediately informed. We rely on these buses not just to transport our children, but to do so safely and efficiently. When breakdowns occur, communication needs to be swift and transparent. The proposed budget would help replace aging buses, excuse me, aging buses, reducing the risk of mechanical failures, and improve communication systems so that parents are never left in the dark. We can all agree that our students deserve to feel safe and we, as parents, deserve peace of mind. Investing in our transportation system is not a luxury, it's a necessity. I urge you to fully support Dr. Kramer's budget because every dollar invested in transportation is a dollar invested in the safety and success of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Greg Brown?
Good evening, Dr. Kramer, Board Members. Happy to see everybody here. I'm also a member of the Hardy Elementary PTA, although I'm not on the Executive Board. I got two kids in our schools, one at Hardy, one here at Westside. I'd like to start by thanking Dr. Kramer, Dr. Coleman, and the rest of the staff for continuing to look for innovative ways to fill the needs of our school system in the most cost-effective way possible. I got to tour the old Hardy that's now been converted into the new central office and that was a great move. They even salvaged the doors and frames from the old office here and took them over to save money. They sourced some used office furniture to save money. They've done a great job taking care of our taxpayer dollars and using what we have to fill the needs as best they can and that's been a huge success. That's great. It also moves the Technology Department over there, so that's going to free up classrooms at Smithfield High that they can then use over there. So just all around an amazing job. They did it with state funds, so we didn't even have to pay for it locally. Bunch of key points I saw in the budget and I'll try not to talk too fast. Glad to see we're asking for five buses a year for the next three years. We got five last year. I suspect by the end of that time, some of the buses that we have now are going to need to rotate out of service, so this will be an ongoing need. I did note in the discussion, there was a, some talk about a line item for engine replacement. And I believe Mr. Wooster pointed out, you know, it's questionable how much value we get out of putting an engine into an old bus, but we may have to do that if we can't get new buses in fast enough to take the old ones out of service. So that's just another point that we need to keep rotating buses in so we can get the old ones off the road. The idea for converting the old boiler room at Smithfield High to the new band room, great idea, more thinking outside the box to make effective use of our resources. And again, that's going to free up some more classrooms that can be used for instruction for other areas. I was really happy to see accessibility in the budget with the new ADA bleachers at Smithfield High. One thing that I like to point out is accessibility helps lots of people, not just people with disabilities. My kids aren't that far out of being in strollers, like having ramps and sidewalks helps parents with young kids, it helps anybody that's getting older and having a hard time getting upstairs, anybody just recovering from an injury that has a harder time getting around it. It helps a lot of people. Pay raises and benefits for teachers and staff, we absolutely need to stay competitive as a school district. And I think Mr. Colick mentioned that we need to make sure we're taking care of the staff and teachers we have now because it's really disheartening as an employee if you've been working your tail off somewhere and then you see new hires coming in the door getting what you've been working for five or ten years to get. So we need to make sure we're taking care of the people we got. Smart boards, I volunteer at Hardy pretty extensively and I see those boards being used in every single classroom I help in. So they do get used. Student devices, I'm old school too, I like pencil and paper, but it's the twenty-first century and having students learn how to use technology safely and effectively is just part of the society we live in. And then lastly, we all celebrated the recent award of the Teacher Quality Grant and I understand now that this grant funding is frozen and our teachers are unable to apply for this program. So what actions are we taking to get this funding freed up? I am trying to call our Congressperson and Senators every day and I would urge you to do the same both individually and as a Board. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Brown.
Shawna Van Skiver?
Good evening, School Board Members, Dr. Kramer and guests. My name is Shawna Van Skiver. I reside in the Carrollton District and I'm a school counselor at Windsor Elementary. I have the pleasure of working with dedicated skilled teachers, caring staff members and IAs, and supportive administrators. I find myself frustrated during budget discussions each year. Two years ago, I raised concerns about the teacher pay increases not accounting for the step increases we deserve. Our percentage raise replaced our step, keeping our salaries lower than those in surrounding areas. Last year, the Board reiterated that our raise would also replace our step, prioritizing other needs over teacher pay. This year, I heard the words "across the board" at three percent raises. Does that mean each line of the current pay scale will increase by three percent? Or does it mean that the three percent will replace our step up? It's doubtful we will receive both, but it would be a step in the right direction. Last year, I expressed my discontent when the Board approved a $10,000 raise for school clinicians, not because I thought the clinicians did not deserve it, but because the justification was that they needed a $10,000 raise to be competitive with other divisions or some clinicians would leave. My argument was that teachers could also earn higher salaries elsewhere, but that fell on deaf ears. This year, I heard the word unfair said to Mr. Wooster regarding raises for nurses while others would get minimum. I see resources allocated for new buses, HVAC systems, and facilities, but teachers continue to receive the bare minimum raise set forth by the government, or the governor, excuse me. Will they stay? Ms. Sullivan reported challenges in recruiting and retaining teachers, stating that our pay ranks fourteenth compared to neighboring areas, requiring a ten percent increase to be competitive. Mr. Colick noted that three percent is insufficient to keep up the pace with the living costs. While the Board seeks creative funding methods for capital improvements, they fall short in adequately funding teacher salaries. Can we get a one-time allocation to make teacher pay competitive so we can recruit the most, recruit and most importantly, retain, retain the teachers that we have? There should be a balance. Lower pay should ideally then mean better working conditions. Unfortunately, that's not the case. Teachers often go without breaks due to planning requirements for the reading and math curriculum and lack duty-free lunch. They also monitor recess. With twenty-two to twenty-three kindergarteners and twenty-seven fifth graders per class, teachers are strained to meet the diverse needs of students. Teachers frequently stop instruction to manage student behavior, at times requiring multiple staff members to address significant needs. Removing, removing positions like RBTs increases stress for sped teachers who have large caseloads, counselors who are managing mental health needs, and increased 504 referrals and paperwork associated, and administrators who are working hard to assist all stakeholders. Teachers are even cleaning their classrooms due to insufficient cleaning services. We still can't seem to get tables wiped and floors swept and mopped unless the teachers are doing it. This year, I've seen teachers leave the profession entirely. Our educational foundation is crumbling. In the last meeting you suggested we should only ask for what we think we can get. Would we ever tell a child to limit their aspirations? We would never discourage them from reaching for the stars. I urge you to make a fair decision in this budget. Raise the salaries for teachers, nurses, clinic assistants, as you did for clinicians. Adequately staff our clinics and retain the RBTs to support overloaded teachers. I challenge the School Board Members to engage with us directly. Instead of asking Dr. Kramer and his staff what to cut, visit our schools to understand our needs. Come hang out in our schools for more than just a few minutes. Spend time in our classrooms to see the daily realities of what teachers face. We must advocate for them. Our children, my children, your children, our grandchildren need them. And this year, they left, a lot of them did. What is the return on investment? Because I heard that a lot too, now that I know that I have more time. What is the return on investment? We need to invest in our teachers because that is where it starts, the foundation.
Thank you.
I'm going to try not to mess this up, I'm sorry. Erin Fitzmaurice? I hope I didn't butcher it.
Thank you. Okay. I'm sorry. Yes. My name is Erin Fitzmaurice. I am a Special Resources IA here at Westside Elementary. I myself am new to education with this only being my second year. However, in those two years, I have learned a lot. I have learned compassion on an entirely different level, patience beyond what I ever thought possible, and most importantly, how much heart goes in to what teachers and IAs do on a daily basis. Working with the children that we work with is incredibly challenging, but also immensely rewarding. I've seen a student go from non-verbal to speaking in full sentences, a student written off by most, work hard at behavior goals, and is honestly knocking it out of the park. I've seen closed-off students open their hearts and let others in. I love my job, I love the people I work with, the county, the children, and the look of accomplishment when a new task is mastered and the overwhelming pride that goes along with that. That being said, my eyes have also been opened. I now ask my own children rather disturbing questions when you consider that I'm asking them about their school day. In just two years of time, I have racked up a few workman's comp claims. I have been cursed at, screamed at, spit at. I have been bit, hit, punched, kicked. I have had scissors, full water bottles, books, chairs, desks, pretty much anything that resides in a classroom, launched at me with surprising force. My hair is always up because I've had handfuls of hair ripped from my head. I have been threatened with actions that go beyond what I've already listed. Honestly, sometimes all of this happens in a single day, sometimes within just an hour, more often than I care to admit. Our IAs are asked to cover classes and still be able to fulfill their own responsibilities. And we do this with limited resources. We don't even get computers to work on and we don't even get GoGuardian access, which something as simple as that would make our day run much more smoothly. Yet after a moment where we have high emotions and things are going on in the classroom and things have calmed down, we work together to make the rest of the day better. Previous behaviors are left in the past and every minute is new and previous actions are never held against the student. Every IA I know has gone through this at some point. We work together as a collective whole to make sure our students have every opportunity that they need and we don't let each other struggle.
One minute.
I often hear retention and how to increase it being mentioned at School Board meetings. Right now, I could go work at Burger King as a line worker in Newport News and make nineteen dollars an hour and that is three dollars more than what I make now. It also comes with a lot less stress and a lot less mental exhaustion. Our IAs here, we show up every day, we care for our kids, we would not be here showing up every day if we did not. And we show up because we know what we do matters and we want to see our children succeed. Yet we struggle individually to support our own family. With this, I have to support Trish Magner and ask the IAs receive a pay increase that matches what we bring to Alawak County School System. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we proceed, Dr. Kramer, can you tell me what GoGuardian is?
Mr. Co- it's, he will help us out. Thank you, sir.
GoGuardian that she's referring to is a monitoring program for Chromebooks so that they can see their screens.
Copy, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Kimberly Brown?
Hi, my name is Kimberly Brown. I am a homeowner in Carsville and I am here to speak about the lack of a special needs classroom in Carsville Elementary School. I have four children, three are in the school system now, one being at the high school, the middle and the elementary level in Carsville and Windsor. My youngest is five years old, she's special needs and is not enrolled in school. She goes to walk-in services at Carsville Elementary and receives OT, PT, and speech therapy. We have toured Windsor Elementary's special needs classroom, which is where everyone gets diverted to, every single special needs children in our community in Isle of Wight all get diverted to one school with one classroom with one set of teachers that are overwhelmed and underprepared for every single student. Windsor, or excuse me, Carsville has an extensive special needs classroom, a sensory classroom, with a large amount of money that was spent for this classroom that is not being used to its full potential because we lack those students. While we enjoy Windsor and we were met with, you know, smiling faces and kind people, when we toured that classroom, it was a full classroom, a very small classroom with only two people. These children have completely different needs. Being in Carsville puts me at a much bigger distance for traveling for Windsor versus Carsville. While I'm willing to go to any lengths for any time, my daughter has more than just special needs. She also has a heart condition and she also has seizures. So in the event that one of those events happened, then I would be able to get to her much quicker than I would if she was at Windsor. If I'm honest, I've never came and spoke at one of these. I'm not going to sound as eloquently as all those people, but I just really am hoping because it's been in the budget twice in prior years and never made, you know, important that we just take time for our most important and most sensitive community members. These children have needs. We need the RBTs, we need the special needs teachers, we need the classrooms. Every single child needs a chance. They were not equipped to be able to take care of Chloe's needs in the Windsor school. Carsville is much smaller. She's been there for two years using those services and I just ask that you make that a permanent position for a full day of class, which is what's required of them. She should have started school this past September and because they were not equipped enough in Windsor, we did not feel safe doing that and we are continuing to utilize all of the therapies that she can receive. But come September, I have to have her signed up somewhere and I'm hoping it can be Carsville. And this is not just about Chloe, this is not just about her.
One minute.
And I'm just hoping that you consider everyone. She's autism level three, she's non-verbal. She has a heart condition that usually gives a lifespan of between seven and twelve. And instead of letting that limit her, we want to use that time to get what she deserves. And it's your responsibility to set all of our children up, especially our special needs children that cannot speak up for their own needs. So I'm just asking that that's considered for the budget and put into place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown.
Herb DeGraff?
Herb DeGraff, District Five. Board Members, early this afternoon, about five o'clock, I sent you an email, so I'd appreciate it if you'd take a look at that later on when you get on, because it's a little more detailed than what I'm going to make a few comments about here this evening. But I have a copy here of a membership report over the last ten years.
And you know one thing that really jumps out at you? What the cost per student was in two thousand fifteen?
In two thousand fifteen, compared to what the proposed budget will result in a cost per student in fiscal year twenty-six, it's fifty percent more.
Wow.
And I don't think we've had that kind of inflation over the last ten years. In any case, cost control management is not something that comes easy to professional educators. In fact, I think it's anathema to most and it's not something they get involved in. But if you really want to do justice to teachers and specific support personnel, you will have a professional, well-done compensation and benefit study that is done so that you know that you're paying people what is competitive in the greater Hampton Roads area. And if you compare, as I did years ago when I was on the School Board, I just compared the people that were working in the central office making the five and six-figure salaries. It was amazing how any number of our central office people were making more than the five other districts that I compared them to. And I was always astounded at that. But it really does take doing a compensation study professionally. And you have somebody- And you have somebody on your staff in the central office who can do that, and I mentioned this to her a little while ago when I first came in. So I will leave that up to her as to whether she volunteers to do that for y'all and for the superintendent. But it's really important, because teachers need to be competitive in the area. Certain jobs within the central office need to be competitive in the area. And you've heard it before, the nurses in the school need to be competitive, and from what I've heard, they certainly are. And the last thing that you probably ought to consider after I listened to the one lady, I think you may have to pay combat pay to some of these teachers. Now, those of us that have been in the military know why you get combat pay, because you get shot at. Well, getting spit on, having things thrown at you, and having your hair pulled, et cetera, that's akin to it in a quiet, domestic, civilian occupation. I'd have never dreamed that when I was a kid back in the 50s. Man, my dad would have worn my britches out, and it's unfortunate that parents today don't do that, because teachers need that support, and they need the support from y'all when it comes to making sure that the discipline enacted gets rid of these people and they don't stay in the Isle of Wight County School System. In fact, refer them to J&amp;D Court and let them go do some hard time in a nice facility where they learn to respect authority. So, again, last thing, cost control management. Most of you up there know what that's about because of the timed jobs that you've had or have. See if you can help the superintendent become a cost control manager and go out there and have a real compensation study done. Lastly, you know, if they have DOGE at the federal level, why not have an Isle of Wight County School Board, school government efficiency, school efficiency study done, particularly in the central office? Might find that you've got more people there, and you could combine some jobs and save some money. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak tonight? Floor's open. Come on up, ma'am.
Good evening, Dr. Kramer and board members. My name is Judy McNoor. I work at Smithfield High School as an instructional assistant. This is my 15th year there. When I first started in '09, we had like 10 IAs. At this point right now, for regular general classes, not self-contained. Right now, we're down to four, and we're all over the place trying to help out and do our jobs. I work mostly with the math teachers and algebra and geometry. Love helping the students in that. And for being here for, this is my 15th year, I think a person coming in is $15 or $16 an hour when they come in new. I'm only at $20. I feel that I should, and other IAs who are in the same situation that I am, should be probably making a little bit more than that. And, oh, the other thing is, we don't get laptops. IAs are given iPads. My iPad is now obsolete. It won't update. I use it for Desmos, I use it, you know, to look up information that I need to help students in math. I was trying to think if it was anything else, but, and we're busy all day long, moving from class to class. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Come on up, sir. Chief, sorry. Come on up, chief.
Good evening, Dr. Kramer, board. My name's Timothy Paul. Wasn't planning on speaking, so this will be a quick free flow. What our previous speakers were talking about, about the violence that occurs in the classrooms is absolutely true. So I am a sped inclusion kindergarten in first grade, and my last three days, I would say, probably seven hours of being spit, hit, slapped, kicked, objects thrown. It's a really tough job. I was in the military for 23 years in the Coast Guard, and I will say, this is tougher than that was, without question. As far as pay, you know, I'm brand new, so I'm at the bottom of the barrel. I do all right with my retirement and stuff, but some of these guys shouldn't have to work two jobs or three jobs just to get by. Also, one thing I haven't really heard a lot of, I watch the meetings. There is a very high cost to replace an employee that leaves. So that we're all aware of that. It's not just a one-on-one. You lose institutional knowledge, experience, and it's a high cost. It's worth keeping them, and it's worth keeping us. Thank you.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Kramer. I want to talk to you about a couple of things. First thing I want to talk about, again, is the bus transportation. I'm sorry.
Tell us who we are.
Okay, I'm Tyler Joss. My name is Kenneth Parker. I'm a parent of Hardy Elementary, two students at Hardy Elementary. I'm also a director of youth programs for the Department of the Navy. So I'm kind of speaking from a professional and from a parent's standpoint. I'm too entrusted on trying to transport children to and from school every day in Portsmouth and Chesapeake School Districts. So I understand one of the things that I implore from my program is child safety. That's one of the biggest things I preach to my staff, my program, to everybody I'm around. Before you can do anything, you have to make sure a child is safe and in a safe environment. So as a parent and as a programmer, I want to make sure that I am doing everything possible to have my children safe. Like, right now, transportation, right now, is a key concern for me as a parent. When I don't know what school bus is going to bring my child home because of different transportation changes daily, how reputable that bus is, is going to break down between the school and my home, things of that nature make me have a pause for concern. Like, the other day, we had a storm come in yesterday. I was so more concerned about, is that bus going to get my child home safely, that I stopped everything, left work early so I could go pick my children up from the school for my safety and for my mental standpoint. So as a parent, I'm imploring you to think about that when you're doing your budget to ensure that we have a peace of mind as a parent. When I'm at work, when I'm doing my things, I can know that my two children, my heart that's working outside of my body, is going to get to where they need to be safely. That's my first thing. The second thing, doing budgets myself, I know you've got different priorities. I understand that you've got to think, some things are top-of-the-line versus some of the things that are a little bit more low-hanging fruit. But make sure that when you're doing those things, think about people first. Think about the children that we are entrusted to and the teachers that we are employing, that we employ. Without those two, no school district can be successful. So I want you to make sure you're understanding that. I understand about efficiency with costs and everything like that, but also remember that without them, without those basic foundational blocks, you will not have a house to stand with. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody else? Don't be bashful. Now's your chance. Going once? Going twice? All right. Appreciate everybody coming out. Unless there's any comments, I believe we'll close this meeting out. Don't run off, because we're going to transition into a work session, so I think we'll probably address many of your concerns and comments this evening. So I think we should adjourn, take five, and come back. Is five good enough for everybody?